This conference will now be recorded.
We're calling to order the July 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as the reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123, access code Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. All right, can we stand for the watch?
... which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a reminder, for the open meeting law, we have to ask if anyone else is recording?
Oh, certainly, thank you. Is anybody else recording this meeting? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Is there a public comment list?
Yeah.
So we have two people for public comment. We do have interviews today for the Housing Board, so I do ask that you'd keep your public comments to three minutes. Mr. Moriarty? Miss, I'm sorry, miss, thank you.
I'm here as a representative of many tenants from Packard Jog Village, under the umbrella of Auburn Housing. We are looking for advice and whatever help the Board of Selectmen can give. We have had conversations with Senator Moore and Ms. Goodwood. They have helped us as much as they can. We would like the state to come hold a meeting with the tenants, but they refuse because the Housing Board gives Ms. Brennan such high marks. They are unaware that Ms. Brennan has stacked the board and is trying to restack it again. Ms. Brennan has called a few tenants to ask them to run for the opening that now exists. In fact, she told one man he would be a shoo-in because he's a veteran and a minority. How ridiculous is that? This man is a wonderful person, but his skin color has nothing to do with it. To use the race card is ridiculous and insulting. Ms. Brennan is already using two tenants that originally ran for tenant reps, Ms. Turner and Ms. Catino. The tenants that signed the petitions for tenant reps have been taken advantage of, as Ms. Brennan told Ms. Turner and Ms. Catino not to listen to the tenants' issues. We need to go through the office. This is a huge problem, as Ms. Brennan refuses to talk to us, not face-to-face, not on the phone, no communication allowed. Now Ms. Catino has been made treasurer, and Ms. Turner, vice treasurer. Are they really qualified for such important titles? I don't believe they are qualified to be on the board at all. We all know Ms. Brennan made a play to put Mr. Page back on the board after the town spoke loud and clear, to reject him. Ten years of him being on the board is more than enough. He needs to look into some of the things, some of the facts, that are present, especially with Ms. Turner. She brought around a petition. He's called me a liar several times on that. I'm not a liar. I believe that petition was turned over to this Board of Selectmen. Ms. Brennan doesn't want the public to be aware of how she runs her prisons. She no longer wants the meetings to be transparent and viewed by the public. Lost my place. If she would be honest, she would have to admit she's calling other directors to find out what they do, but the only things that she wants to bring to Auburn Housing are the rules that would make it more difficult for the tenants. Instead of the little things that can make our lives and surroundings beautiful, other places have solar lights, you can put out a shepherd's hook with a basket of flowers. We allow none of this. Everything has been taken away. Our rights to garden, all of it is gone. Ms. Stein-Hilber seems very intelligent with common sense and empathy for us tenants, but she can't do it alone. We would like to have the vote rescinded and continue to be able to view the meetings. Transparency is absolutely needed with this director in board. At the last meeting I went to, I asked if the dates of the housing meetings could be posted. Ms. Brennan assured me they would be put in the laundry room. May I show you the one posting she sent up to us? Only one, we haven't got any other posts. This particular meeting was posted six to six and a half feet above us, and I will send this paper around to you. I appreciate your time, thank you for listening, and I hope you can help.
Thank you for your comments. Our second person for public comment is Mr. Largess. I said, "I'm sorry." Our second person for comment is Mr. Largess for public comment.
When I was out walking, door knocking, back in March, April, for the May election, I ran across a bunch of residents over on the Bren Marav, Bren Marav Extension, Elbridge, Waterman, Warren, and they had a major concern. There is no sidewalk from the Masspike Bridge to the pumping station on Bren Marav Extension. I believe it's Bren Marav, I don't know where the road actually stopped. I witnessed three kids riding their bicycle, and a car was coming the other way, one was coming up behind them, and the car that was behind them swerved over a little bit and almost hit that little kid. I asked EPW, we talked about water, because it's too close to the water. Another resident told me that they don't encourage walking on the busy road. I have a dozen residents right now, and one of the reasons I'm coming is because Precinct Five Town Meeting member reached out to me, because they've already contacted him as well. So, Mark Lidbahn. So he asked me, he's up in Maine on vacation, to come and speak for him. So that's why I'm here. So I heard that you were looking for money for sidewalks, and that is really in dire need of a sidewalk over there. Also, on this side of the bridge, there is 10 feet that was never repaired. They just put gravel on the ground. Lady down further on Bren Marav has two kids, and she said it's a pain in the, you know what, to try and get that stroller up and over that sidewalk, because it's gravel. She said if there's any moisture, the stroller just sinks right in. So that's an area that I would definitely say, for safety reasons, really, really needs sidewalks. I mean, we're talking maybe a couple hundred yards. So that's why I'm here. Mr. Lidbahn asked me to come, I'm here because other people asked me to come. All righty?
Yes, thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so we are going to, we have six applicants for the Housing Authority position. We are going to go in alphabetical order. I think the plan is to have the applicants move to the planning room, so we are able to talk to them one at a time. So if you are here for the interview process, if you could head to the planning room. I'm sorry, we're going to start with Mark Benal. No, so we're all going to stay here at the board, and then the applicants, so we are able to talk to them individually separately, are going to head to the planning boardroom.
So we're not allowed to be in on the age of?
Oh, no, no, you are staying and are going to participate in the interview. The people we are interviewing, I'm asking them to head to the planning board. So, yes, no, no problem, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. Yes. Would you like to start with questions? Do you have questions? Oh, I'm so sorry, I thought you were the, I have never met you before, Roberta. I am so sorry. Yes. I do not want them to see.
Don't want them to see.
Right. Yes. I am so sorry, Roberta, I just assumed you were sitting here, and so you were the chair, and you have to open it. It's nice to meet you, too.
Roberta's husband used to sit in that chair.
Really? That's wonderful. Anybody that sits in this chair is good. Okay. Yep, okay, so.
Can we meet you?
Certainly. Nice to meet you. Can I know? Do a quick introduction about who everybody is. First, could I have you call your meeting to order?
Doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Yes, so I need you, it's a joint meeting, so you'll need to call your meeting to order as well. I'm sorry, can you just lean into the mic a little bit? I'm so sorry, thank you.
I'm Roberta Briggs, I'm chair.
I'm Rose Turner, vice treasurer, here.
I'm Sharon Catino, treasurer.
Stein-Hilber.
And do you want to do a quick?
Todd Crane.
Anne Kavanaugh.
Steve Chambers.
Dan Carpenter.
And Sarah Roughly, Chair. So we have a Mark here with us. Does your board have questions for Mark?
I may, yes.
There we go, okay, yeah. Any question? Mark Benal, Fourfield Street, lifetime resident, county member in Precinct Four, county representative to the Worcester Regional Transit Authority. You have any questions for me, or any?
Mr. Benal?
Yeah, okay.
What is your interest in housing?
To make sure it's a safe and clean place for the residents and to get along. And it seems like there's, I don't know, like, some people look down on people living in the Housing Authority, they shouldn't do that. They're residents as anyone else that has a house or anyplace else, an apartment. Have activities.
Mark, I've known you for quite a few years. Oh, yes. I've known you for quite a few years, Mark, and I know you've been very active in town, and you've done a good job. And I really don't have any questions for you right now, because if you come on the board, everybody gets training automatically. So I don't really have any questions for you, because I know you personally, and there really isn't a lot that I have to ask you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to the Select Board. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Benal?
Mark, how are you? It's Todd.
Hi, Todd.
Thank you for volunteering. I have two questions that I'll be asking every single member, every single person who's a candidate. The first is, as you heard tonight, the Housing Authority took a vote recently to stop the public recording and posting of their meetings, so that members of the public can follow along if they're unable to attend the meeting. Is that something that you support, or do you support it being recorded and publicly accessible?
I support to have it live, to have the meetings broadcast on Auburn Access Channel. I watch it myself, and you learn a lot, what's going on, I'm a fan of the meetings.
Thank you. My second question is near and dear to my heart, is involving the residents, like you just indicated, and you heard the public comment tonight. What are ways that you think the Housing Authority Board can better engage with the residents and get them involved in the operations and the outreach and the running of the Housing Authority, to make sure that their needs are addressed?
Maybe, like, maybe have a meeting at different, the Housing Authorities, like back at Truck Village, have a meeting up there, and then have more open meetings. It seems like the people don't come to the meetings unless they have a problem, or they're upset with something, just, it's, try to get the people to come to the meetings more. You know, maybe have, like, maybe alternate one month at Stoneville, and next month at Packard Truck Village.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mark?
Yes, Dan.
Big shoes to fill if you get the appointment with your dad, having been a member for many years on the Housing Authority, so you probably have some stories and some background in what the board does, just from your dad. So I'm not particularly worried about you, I know you're very intent and very well-versed on what needs to be done. So, you know, my biggest question is, would you be, and would any candidate I'll ask, would you be considering running for a full term if appointed?
Yes.
And to build on Mr. Crane's comment, what other ways, besides holding meetings in multiple locations and being available to members, would you want to be available as a representative to the residents?
I'd have at least once a month, a meeting with the residents, I'd have open hours, like, open meeting hours for the residents at both places, and maybe they could have some activities, you know, put a horseshoe pit in or something, just do some activities with the residents, too.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, Mark, this is Sarah. I have one question, and I think you maybe have already answered it a little bit, but what ideas would you propose to improve current housing conditions?
Maybe, like every 10 years, go in and replace all the carpets in the main corridors, the stairways, and then maybe even start painting out some of the apartments. Even if the person doesn't leave, you know, every 10 years, you go in, you paint out the whole apartment, replace carpets and tile floors, and, you know, maintain the place, like, and maybe even go and replace some of the bathrooms. You know, Packard Truck Village was built in the late '70s, so it's all buildings.
Thank you. And then my final question is, if you are not selected for Housing Authority, would you be interested in sitting on, I know you sit on a few boards already, but any other boards?
Yeah, let me guess.
Thank you, thank you. Sure, if you'd like to. Could you bring in Steve?
Steve Consilvio, yeah?
Consilvio, okay. Hi, Mr. Consilvio, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself to start, and then we'll ask some questions?
Most of my time self-employed. Come to this in a kind of a roundabout way, but I've always been interested in housing. I actually have a family member who is a, or was, Board of Directors of Finance, she was the Finance Director at a Housing Authority. I've talked to her a lot of times about housing, just casual conversation. There seems to be some animosity about in the housing situation right now, and I'd just like to help solve it.
Thank you. We'll start with the Housing Board, if you have any questions. Oh, could you just speak into the mic?
What kind of animosity are you speaking about?
Just from watching the meetings, and, you know, some of the things that were said tonight. I mean, it just seems to be, I'm not going to say whether smoke is fire, because there isn't always, there's false accusations why we have a justice system. So just because somebody says something doesn't mean it's true. There's obviously, there's obviously things going on. So I just want to be impartial and help whatever way I can.
Things that are brought to the meetings, if somebody wants to speak to the board, they need to call the Housing Authority and ask to be put on the agenda, because we have a lot of business to do at every meeting, and it's very important that we address and have the material ready that people need to talk about. And unless we know it, how are we going to address it? Because we can't go out right then and look up everything. The other thing is, if it's day-to-day business, it needs to go to the office. The board addresses things that cannot be addressed on a day-to-day, on a day-to-day plan. And we're very open, the board is very open, to hear anyone who wants to speak to the board, if you get put on the agenda. And if you have a complaint, it goes to the office first, in writing to the director, or to, just to the office, and the office will see it goes to the director. So I think what people are not following, the information that they're given when they sign up to come to the Housing Authority, they're given all this information before they actually move in, so that they know exactly what they're supposed to do, why and when. And if they would follow the process, it would be so much easier for everyone, not just for the residents, but for the office and for the board. The board does not handle the day-to-day operation unless there's a problem. The director is in charge of the office.
Thank you for that. Do you have any direct questions for Mr. Consilvio?
Mr. Consilvio, the board meetings are on Thursday mornings at 10:00 a.m. Does your work schedule allow for?
I can make it happen, yeah. Can I just say one more thing? You know, procedurally, what you just mentioned about the residents are not following the procedures, the procedures are in place, but that actually still shows somewhere there's a lack of communication. And I think the board, you know, I think the director's job is a difficult job, the job of the board is to help the director, and if, what you're describing is, is people are not communicating properly. Part of the board's job is to figure out how to make sure that communication occurs, so you don't have flare-ups.
They're given that information in writing, and that they have received it when they move in there.
People don't read instruction manuals, you have to repeat and repeat.
We can both work together, and we're willing to do that. And we try to do that all the time. You know, there's five facilities that the Auburn Housing Authority is in charge of. We're not in charge of this one down here, and there's another one, I don't remember where that one is, but we're not in charge of that one either. But we are in charge of five of them.
Does your board have any more questions, or can we move on to the Select Board questions? Okay. Does anybody have questions?
A lot of comments, but I'll keep it to myself. Mr. Consilvio, thank you very much for volunteering. I'm going to ask you the same two questions that I've asked, that I planned to ask every member, and I already asked Mark. The first is, recently, the Housing Authority voted to discontinue allowing their meetings to be videotaped and recorded and broadcast on the Auburn Community Television and Facebook, so that people from the public and their own residents, I can't make the meetings, can follow along. Did you support that vote, or would you like to see it being recorded?
I think all government business should be as open as possible, period. Whether it's checkbooks, meetings, anything that can be public should be public.
Thank you. My second question is, you heard the comments earlier, this meeting, as well as, you said you've been following along as well, to their meetings. What are some of the ways that you think that the Housing Authority Board can do to gain more feedback from the residents, engage the residents, to make sure that their voices are heard, to make sure that their issues are addressed?
That's kind of, that's an open-ended, that's a good open-ended question. The job of the board is essentially to help the director. You know, we don't work for the residents, we work as an oversight and as a partner with the director, and trying to do, you know, we have to have ears and eyes and listen to people's complaints or concerns or things that happen. You know, it's sort of, just like running a business, you don't know it's going to hit you every day. Things are changing, people are changing, there's, you know, most business is more about running the people than the product, and a housing board is not any different. But procedurally, the director has a ton of stuff on her plate, not just five facilities, but, you know, you know, people in crisis, people, you know, facilities in crisis, every day, I am sure, is, you know, kind of off the cuff. Because, you know, when I did the leadership class with the town, pretty much every department was just like a small business in and of itself, where you don't really know what's going to happen when you come in in the morning. You have a plan, but what happens is usually something totally different. So the board is an asset to the director. That doesn't mean the board is a rubber stamp. The board should have eyes and ideas and ears, and notice things, and have different background and different skill, that can contribute to making the director better, but they're not necessarily a rubber stamp, because if they're a rubber stamp, the director is just going to do as good as she can do without any help. So, you know, that goes back, that's a monarchy and not a democracy, and the reason everything is set up this way is to get everybody's opinions out on the table. People aren't necessarily right because they complain, but a certain percentage will have a valid point that needs to be addressed. And the board's job is just to facilitate, improve. And the Board's job is just to facilitate improvement, essentially.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve, one question. You mentioned that communications can be improved over at the Auburn, at the Auburn Housing between the Board and the residents. What are some ways that you see that that could happen?
That's a, not a good open-ended question. I think there's lots of, first of all, putting the meetings on, you know, broadcasting the meetings. Because if you, I mean, that's just from the beginning to, people, how can they know what's going on if you're not showing it? But, you know, you can do newsletters, you can do signage about meetings, being more accessible, surveys. I mean, there's a lot of things you can do to communicate. It's not that big a universe in terms of, you know, there's five facilities, there's only so many doors in the buildings. I mean, whatever you need to do, there's, it shouldn't be hard to communicate. It shouldn't be hard to have social functions where people can talk. There's just a lot of things. I'm not going to say I'm an expert on, on the best ways to do this. I would wait and see and learn more. I definitely strong personalities living there, people aren't getting along. You know, you'll have to do that, you know, one step at a time.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi, Steve, thank you. Same two questions. Would you be a candidate for a five-year term if you were appointed to this?
Yes.
How would you personally be available to residents as a Board member?
I'm not really sure yet, because I'm not sure the, I'm not really sure yet. I mean, I will say, I'm, I'm very accessible generically. I'm not a hard guy to get a hold of. But I don't really know the lay of the land yet, and I will make myself available as best I can in ways that seem appropriate. I'm not, my job is not to be, I don't think, really to be an ombudsman where I'm listening to the complaints, because that is why there is a procedure for complaints. But at the same time, it is still a social network. Housing is a social network. And we all know that sometimes the stuff that never gets spoken is sometimes most important.
Residents, the residents, the residents, we're not supposed to even know who's in the apartments when we're on the Board. That's a privacy right. We don't know who's in those apartments. I've never met some of the people that are there. The ones that I have met, it's because I know them personally from when they moved in there or they've spoken to me themselves. And the reason for that is they have a right to their privacy. We don't, we don't, we're not there to infringe on anyone's rights or to check up, to make sure the people are doing what they're supposed to do. If there's a problem, the Director takes care of it. If it's something that involves the police, they take care of that too. If there's an emergency, they take care of that. We're not involved with any of it unless we get called because there's a major problem and, and the Director needs our advice.
As a Board member, these are my two questions. And as a Board member with 27 years' experience, the biggest part of this job is being there for the residents, in my opinion. So that's my question.
Following state and federal regulations.
I'm not asking you to knock on doors, Roberta. I'm saying to an applicant, how are you going to be available? Mr. Banal said he would have office hours. So that's the residents seeking them out. That's not violating any law that I'm aware of. But I have my two questions. I'm going to ask my two questions.
But I wanted everyone to understand that how our hands are tied too. Because we don't know what's happening there unless we're told, and Laurie is very good about doing that.
That's wonderful to hear, but we need to hear from the applicants because you're already on the Board. They are not. And I have to make a decision based on what I think is in need for the community.
Ted Banal, I did know, yes. But I don't know some of the others.
Steve, I just have two questions for you. How would you propose to improve conditions for housing?
Well, I would assume that I would have to have a tour of the facilities and talk to the Director and learn a whole lot more than I know now. Because I don't really know. I've had friends that have lived in, in the facilities, no longer live there. You know, I didn't see anything particularly terrible when I, when they were there. But the, but I'm sure things change constantly. Any facility, things are always changing, things break, you know. It's just, so, deal with the facilities as they come up. I've got, I've got a lot to learn. I'm curious to learn, and I'm curious and I'm willing to help. But, and I've got a, you know, a good background in, you know, construction and repair and all that kind of stuff as well, so.
Thank you. And my final question is, I know you sit on a few committees already. Would you be interested in sitting on any other ones if you weren't chosen for Housing Authority?
I am curious about the Finance Board, but I don't think, I've, I've got a very, besides my own business, which I kind of half-run, I also work part-time. And it's a job where I get paid but kind of do what I want. I can literally read books while I'm at work, and I do. And so if I can be training on Housing Authority stuff or learning about finance, it's all the same to me. I've got plenty of capacity.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your application. Does anybody else have any final questions? Thank you. Next, we're moving on to Mary Ellen Fahey. I believe they're bringing her in. Yep, you can introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we're going to ask you some questions.
I'm Mary Ellen Fahey, longtime resident of Auburn, Auburn High. My kids have gone to schools in Auburn. The reason why I would like to be part of Auburn Housing is because in the early 90s, I was a resident at Pheasant Court. Moved in there with a two-year-old, four-year-old, and a nine-year-old. And when I think back, I don't know how the heck I did it, but I did it. And when we moved in, worked a lot with Pat Pakowski. She was the Executive Director. And Pheasant Court, as any low-income housing should be, it's a stepping ground. They give you the resources, you try to better yourself, and you get the heck out of there. So when I was at Pheasant Court, I went to nursing school, graduated. There was four of us that went to school there. I'm so nervous. Haven't been interviewed in so long. One of them, Mary, just retired principal of Burnco. There was another nurse and a social worker. And we got the resources, we got the help because it was low income. We weren't worried really about paying our rent or, you know, groceries and stuff like that. And after that, I bought a house in '94 and never looked back. So I think that's why I have a lot of value in that. And also, I'm now a senior citizen, so I empathize with the senior population. And that's, I think that's about it, really. I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Do you, would you like to start, Roberta?
What, what would you like to...
Sorry, just, yes.
Hard for me to talk this way and look that way. I like to look at people when I talk to them. What, I think, you know, you, you, you just said some wonderful things that you have available. I'm also a nurse, so. Retired many years ago, but anyway. What do you see as something special that you can bring to the Board?
Experiences. I can, I, I've walked the walk. I, I know what it's like. I know what, how frustrating it is. I know it's, you know, to... Yeah, it's, it's, it can be tough, but if you use it right, it's, it's, it's wonderful. But yeah, I know, I can empathize with these young mothers, these young fathers. I can empathize with daycare, childcare, sneakers, this, that. In fact, when we were there, we started a Pheasant Court newsletter. And I have a little paper from that. And where we did, we put little news articles in there, like, who was having sales, where you could go for 20% off. Then we'd also have little things like who lost their first tooth, who moved in, who graduated, who finished college. So it became like a really, like, a little, you know, more of a community. But yeah, definitely because I've walked the walk and I know how hard it is without the resources and without education. Education is key to getting out of there. It is key. You're not going to get out of there unless you have a plan, like a six-month plan, a one-year plan. It's not supposed to be generational. It's not supposed to be long. And you know what? Your kids get really proud when you graduate and you set an example and go on. Been there, done that, and if I could just help one person, one person realize this, that's, you know, as a nurse, if you can help one person, then you've done your job.
Does your Board have any other questions? All right, we're going to move along. Okay. Select Board members have questions?
Thank you very much for volunteering. I've asked the previous two candidates, as in we ask every candidate, the same two questions. The first is, recently, the Auburn Housing Authority took a vote to not allow Auburn, the videotaping of their meetings and not allow it to be broadcast on Facebook or on YouTube so that people who cannot attend can follow along publicly. Is that something that you support, or would you support the continuation of the broadcast of their meetings?
Oh, I support the broadcast. Yeah, no secrets, no, no nothing, lay it all on the table.
Thank you. The second question is, as you heard this evening, previously during the public comment, what are some ways that the Housing Authority can do a better job to engage residents, to get their feedback, to ensure that the voices of the residents are heard at the Board meetings and make sure that their issues are addressed?
Well, I would certainly encourage more people to come. And I would also, like, if I was elected, appointed, I would try, try to go to every household and introduce myself. So they would, you know, put a face with a name and maybe some concerns or, you know, off-the-cuff things. And I think sometimes when you warn things, like when it's not a big room like this and nip it in the bud, I think that's, that's, that's helpful.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, is it appropriate that there's a back and forth? These are my questions. This is an interview with prospective candidates. And it seems every time one of the candidate issues a question, answers a question of myself or Mr. Carpenter, the Housing Authority Board decides to counter their answers. And I think that's inappropriate for a public body interview. I've been involved with many of these in my daytime profession, and I've never seen it happen.
Sure.
The thing is, if you want people to know these answers, and I'm here and I can answer, the Board is here, and we can answer those questions, so then they will understand better what's happening.
I'm not here to interview you, as Mr. Carpenter already said, you're already on the Housing Authority. I'm here to interview them and to get an understanding of how they would engage with the residents. As you, as you, as you said, whoever gets appointed undergoes a training in terms of proper procedures, so they will learn it at that time. But they are answering my questions so that I can get an understanding of how they will engage with the residents, and then I will make my decision. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for volunteering. My question is, what do you see as the priorities of the Auburn Housing Authority Board?
I think just keeping the tenants safe, safe housing, especially Pheasant Court. I'm not really too familiar with Packer Chog, but I know Pheasant Court, just to keep them safe. And have, like, that, your home should be your safe haven. And if there's, like, loud music or, like, traffic and, you know, disturbance, it's not right. Your home should be your home. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. I don't have any questions. Same too. So if appointed, would you, would you be a candidate for a five-year seat?
Sure. Yep.
She's already answered really my second question, which is how you would be personally available, make yourself personally available to the residents.
Sure.
So I'm not going to ask you that question because you're already answered it. So thank you very much.
I just have two questions. What would you propose to improve her current housing conditions?
I don't know what the problems are right now.
That's fair. And if you were not chosen for the Housing Authority Board, would you be interested in any other committees or boards?
Sure.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time. All right, so we're going, we're all, we're all set. You can have a seat if you'd like. Thank you.
Can I introduce this letter and you guys can look at it at your leisure?
What is the letter for? Certainly, yes, thank you.
I have a Pat Pakowski. She had written a letter.
So I think we're going to move on to the next candidate, Susan Galouli. I hope I'm saying that right. Hello. Hi, Susan. If you would like, have an opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we're going to have some questions for you.
Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Susan. I've been residing in Auburn for the last 25 years. I live actually right across the way from Packer Chog, the forest park there. I applied, actually, because I wanted to be more involved here and in Auburn. On my, my personal career, whatever. I'm actually, I've worked in affordable housing for the last 23 years. So property manager, I actually have taken several different roles over the years in the same agency that I work, work for now currently. All my moves over the years have been lateral moves. I started out on the service side, working where I work now, doing a lot of intake, stabilization work with the residents that I now am their landlord for now, this many years later. I would say about 90, 95% of the folks that I work with have some form of disability. That's my focus. And, and with elders specifically as well. I do, and within my role too, I'm not, you know, not just doing rent collection and all that. I'm, I'm very hands-on. I'm out in the field a lot. I'm in people's homes, interviews, having meetings, doing their inspections. I do a lot of stuff on the compliance side. So I'm usually the point person for all the auditing, whatnot where I work as well. But years ago, I couldn't, it was hard to find employment in around this area, so I ended up... So I ended up, you know, I work out in the Cambridge and Somerville area and I do have a lot of housing, work closely with a lot of different housing authorities, but on that end. And there wasn't opportunities on this end. But I'm still there, but I also want to be more involved on this end here. Thought that this would be a good fit.
Thank you. Housing Board, did you have any questions?
Susan, you say that you're in Somerville and Cambridge working currently? Would you have the ability to attend the meetings at 10:00 AM?
Oh, yeah. I serve on two other boards. It doesn't seem nobody to interrupt on this one here. I serve on the board where I live and those are on usually the third Thursdays. I serve on a board with Hope Haven, a pet rescue group as well, located in Auburn and Worcester area. And these meetings, I'm always home, usually between, no later than six. You know, and if I need to be home, if I need to come home sooner for a meeting, then I choose then, like on those other ones, then I just choose to work remote on those certain days and I just plan ahead. It's never been a problem and the, and I've served on that board for about 13 years. And it's not once been a problem as far as making myself available for meetings.
Do you have any additional questions? Okay, we're going to move on.
Thank you for volunteering. I have two questions of my own, but I just want to clarify. They, they meet Thursdays at 10:00 AM. Are you able to meet 10:00 AM during the daytime?
Oh, okay. That's the first Thursday?
I would defer to.
Because online, when I was looking online, I had Monday, I don't know, obviously it might have changed.
Second Thursday of the month.
At 10:00 AM. So I could also try to make it work. Right now, I would just have to rotate my schedules to have myself be available in the, in the morning at 10:00. I do think that that might be a little bit of a problem for me. And, you know, I was thinking it was the evening times. The only thing I can, the only thing I can say right now to this is that I would have to just, as I did before, over the years, and especially during the three years of COVID, I worked a lot of remote and just had to plan accordingly for that timeframe, so.
Thank you. And thank you for volunteering for this. I'm asking all the candidates the same two questions. As you recently heard during the public comment period, recently, the Auburn Housing Authority took a vote to discontinue the videoing of their meetings and the public broadcast on Facebook, YouTube by Auburn Community Television. Do you support that decision or do you prefer that it be broadcasted?
I thought about that actually when I was, when I tuned into the last few meetings and when I heard that that, when it was brought up and then what the decision, possible decision to be. So it's twofold. I feel like it's a good thing to have it televised for transparency reasons and whatnot. I, you know, and I, and if people who can't attend the meeting, they can always go on YouTube and take a look at what happened. I think that that's important. You know, and I wouldn't want that decision to affect people's ability to show up and, you know, be heard. My thought on that was that they still would have the opportunity to still come and make comments. It just wouldn't be televised. So I'm on the fence about it, to be honest, you know, because I think that there's, I think it's really important. There's a reason why it was televised for so many years. I understand, I think I understand, like based on, I think the last one or two meetings, it was, you know, a little rough. And, and I don't know if that was what, that that was the reason that was given, those meetings specifically to make that decision or I don't know if that decision's been made yet actually, but. So I'm on the fence about it. I can see the pros and cons on both sides. But, but I think it's still important to have them televised.
The other question is, what are some ideas that you have on ways to engage the residents, to make sure their voices are heard, their issues are addressed, that the board can take outside of just the public comment at their meeting?
Well, I don't know. I know I'm, based on the other boards that I serve, you know, normally when a resident has a complaint or whatnot, you shouldn't, you wouldn't go directly to a board member necessarily. On the other hand, I think one-on-one communication and meeting with tenants and engaging them as much as possible, not just in letter writing and sending out memos, or I don't know how, you know, necessarily it's done. But I think the more you're out there and hands-on and doing the face-to-face and going to the communities, I think that that's a huge asset. I think that that's important.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for volunteering. My question is, what do you see as the role of the Auburn Housing Authority? What should the board be doing?
Well, overseeing the general operations on policies and making sure they fall in line and making sure you're in guidance with HUD rule and regulation or on the state, the state regulations. I mean, obviously that's very important. It's a whole compliance piece to make everything run smoothly. However, it's not just about that piece too. It's all about the residents, you know, and, and they are, they are the folks that we serve, or well, you guys serve. I feel like I'm still at my, my job. But I think it's important to be as hands-on as possible. I'm going to lose my train of thought because I'm a little nervous of the podium here. But I just think that creating policies that make sense, that are fair across the board and, and also making sure that it's financially like stable, you know, and whatnot, so you can do X, Y, and Z. And, and then I, you know, I get the sense that, you know, from when I was reviewing the last few meetings, that people do bring their complaints to the board and whatnot, residents in writing and whatnot. And there should be more, I don't know how much the board sees those letters and stuff that go out to the residents of the community and whatnot, but they all should be fallen in line and make sense and be, and fair, you know.
Thank you.
No questions. Already answered the second one pretty much, so I'm not going to ask you the second one. But would you be a candidate for a five-year seat if you were appointed?
Yes.
I have two questions as well. What would you propose to improve housing conditions?
Well, not just on the resident's side, but the units. I haven't been inside the units too, but a large part of what I do on my end is maintenance management, you know, and overseeing that, that side of things and making sure things are running properly and are, things are done in a timely manner inside all the units, bringing things up to, I don't know if this is the direction you were going in, but I think that that piece is important too and making sure that things are, you know, because these are people's homes, you know, and this is their, where they are. It's not just about, you know, yes, they pay rent and they don't own where they live. But it should be as if they own where they lived. Does that make sense?
Certainly, yes. My final question, if you are not selected for the Housing Board, would you be interested in any other boards or committees?
Yes. Commissions for persons with disabilities is, is, is near and dear to me as well.
Does anybody else have any additional questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We are going to be moving on to James Hargrove.
It's out of there.
Sorry. She's going out. She's going.
It took me a minute and I looked through.
Gotcha. Hi, good evening, Mr. Hargrove. We are going to give you some time to tell us a little bit about yourself and then we're going to ask some questions. So if you want to go ahead.
For one, I'm a United States Marine veteran of the Persian Gulf War. I also, thank you. Had an aneurysm reconnect surgery two years ago on the Fourth of July. So literally, I'm blessed to be here. Because I wasn't here, I was dead for 12 hours. And that's about it for me.
Okay. Board, does the Housing Board have any questions for Mr. Hargrove?
I have a question, but I would like to thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
You don't want to tell us about your experience, how long you were in the service?
My service extent lasted four and a half years. I was on board of USS Missouri for two and a half special forces training, special security forces, which provide security for nuclear weapons. Then from there, I went to Camp Pendleton for my last year and a half. And I was stationed with a hostage rescue platoon. And special forces there have six, touched base on six different martial arts, hand-to-hand combat, all types of weapons training. I was very well-trained.
Okay, number one. You're a tenant at?
I'm a tenant at One Packer Chog.
You're a tenant at, at the Housing Authority now?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're a veteran?
Yes, ma'am.
A resident? You're a minority and?
Excuse me, excuse me, what does a minority has to do with it, ma'am?
What it has to do with is I don't believe there is another person in town that, that is a minority that is on.
Roberta, do you have a question for Mr. Hargrove?
But that, a minority doesn't make the difference of who I am. I'm a person, not a minority.
Thank you.
Everything.
Thank you. Do, do your? Thank you. Does your board have any additional questions?
No. The only, the only question I have is, what do you, would you like to do? What would you like to do? How would you like to serve on this board?
If I am elected, permitted to be on the board, for one, to treat everybody equally, for one. That's what it's all about. Okay, I'm not going, with me being in the service, I don't care what color you are or where you're from, anything like that. I've had, I was in a tour with 89 people of African descent, Spanish, Asian, whatever. We're all considered green. We bleed the same and we eat the same, we bathe the same, put our pants on the same way as everybody else. So literally, I really don't care what color you are or your race or if you're a minority or not. I'm going to be fair and listen to the tenants and try and do my best to make their needs known. And that's it.
I just need to say, black or yellow, red or white, all are present in God's sight and that's how I believe.
Roberta, I'm so sorry. We need to stop bringing race into this. Yes, I would also like to remind the public to not make demonstrations. Does your board have any additional questions?
Mr. Hargrove?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you see your role if you were appointed to the board? What is your role in overseeing the executive director?
My role with that is to work closely with that person and bring everything, everybody to an equal opportunity, to an equal standing. Not go above, not go below, but make sure everything that the residents of all the housing complexes have an equal right and equal say in what's done.
So we're going to move on to the Select Board questions?
First, thank you very much for your service.
Yes, sir.
I have two questions. I've asked the same two questions of all the candidates. The first is recently, the Auburn Housing Authority took a vote to discontinue allowing their meetings to be videotaped and broadcast by Auburn Community Television on Facebook, YouTube, live, et cetera, so that people who could not attend the meetings could follow along. Is that a decision that you would have supported as a member or do you support the broadcast?
Believe it or not, I don't look at Facebook and I, believe it or not, I really don't even look at these meetings. Because as an individual and a military standpoint, politics and military don't go together. But I will be fair.
Second question is, what are some ways that you believe the Auburn Housing Authority can do a better job with engaging with the residents, collecting their feedback, addressing their, finding out what their issues are, addressing their issues, et cetera? What are some other ways besides just coming to the public comment section of the meeting?
Just believe it or not, just interacting with the residents and their communities. Because I know for a fact in certain communities that there's issues with other residents that need to be addressed and that has been addressed and they've done the best they can to address them, but still, it's still going on. So we would work, I would work closely with those residents to try and get them, the problems resolved.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for volunteering. What do you see as the, to be the priorities of the Auburn Housing Authority Board?
Honest with you, the cable sucks. You guys need better cable. Okay, for one, Spectrum is the worst cables company around. But you guys need to be in more companies. Two, I would say, let them, let them do gardening. We have a lot of elderly people that like to garden. And that's one way that they be able to relax and have more activities for them to interact with others in other surroundings and other communities. And that's it.
Thank you.
Semper Fi and thank you for your service. As a resident, have you had any interactions with the board?
Believe it or not, no. I keep with me, I'm a very private person, for one. I got out with an honorable discharge. I keep to myself. I say hi to people. They say hi to me, I say hi back. I'm very easygoing or happy-go-lucky, so to speak. And that's how I was brought up and that's how I should, will remain to the day I die.
And I just met him tonight. I've never met him before.
So I'm going to ask the same two questions, Mr. Hargrove, as I have for the other members that have come before you, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your forthrightness with your comments earlier. Would you, if appointed, be a candidate for the five-year seat?
Yes.
How would you personally be available to residents as a board member?
Honest, I'd be really available. I see a lot of, where I'm at now, I see a lot of residents outside. They wave, we talk. Very friendly, very nice. I get along with everybody. So I don't see a problem with that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hargrove, I have two questions for you, but first I would also like to thank you for your service. What ideas would you propose to improve current housing?
Improve current housing?
Yeah, the condition, sorry.
Some of the housing complexes, they need to be kept up more. Like where I'm at, you pretty much eat off the ground there, so to speak. It's very well-maintained and it's not as fat much as the maintenance. It's more of certain tenants in that and they need to be held accountable for keeping their areas clean and the surrounding areas clean as well. And if they're not, then you get them, get them a letter. They'll let them know if it continues, hey, something's going to be done. Plain and simple. It's an automatum. You either clean or you don't clean.
Thank you. And my final question is, if you are not selected for the Housing Board, would you be interested in any other committees?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for answering our questions. You can have a seat and we can move on to the final candidate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final candidate will be Wayne Page. Good evening, Mr. Page. Thank you so much for coming. You can tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we're gonna ask you a few questions.
Sure. My name's Wayne Page. I live at ninety Old Common Road, Auburn, Mass. for the past thirty-eight, forty years. I've been on numerous committees since I've been here. I've been on the Veterans Memorial Corridor, I've been on the Fourth of July Committee, I've been on the Solid Waste Committee, I've been on the School Committee, I've been on Town Meeting. There's probably a few more that I'm missing. Oh, and we got a purple hat for the town of Auburn, me and two other residents. We went out and secured a free one and had it delivered to the town. We raised money to have the names put on the monument, and then we had turned it over to the town. It wasn't just me, there was a person, Dick Landevan and Cindy Blaze, that helped in doing so. And I just wanna make sure they get recognized for their helping. But I would say that's about it right now. You probably will see on my application that I missed a few, but I can't remember off all of them on the top of my head or how long I was on that committee. So I'll just give you a little rundown.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with the housing board. Do you have any questions for Mr. Page?
No, I don't have any questions for him.
Okay. So we'll move along to the select board.
Thank you very much for volunteering for the position. I've asked all the candidates the same two questions. The first question is, recently, the Auburn Housing Authority took a vote to discontinue the broadcast and video of their meetings, which allow people to follow along who can't attend the meetings. Is that a vote that you support, or do you prefer that the meetings continue to be videotaped and broadcast to the public?
I believe they should be video and broadcast for the people in town.
Thank you. Second question, what are ways that the Auburn Housing Authority can do a better job of engaging with its residents, getting feedback from its residents, making sure their issues and concerns are heard and addressed, other than coming to the public comments section at the meetings?
Well, the thing that I have a problem with is that, all these years, people haven't been coming to the meeting under Citizens Comment. And then all of a sudden, they, they showed up after the election, and everybody knows what happened with that, and I'm not gonna discuss it, because I don't think it's right, what happened. And, but I will continue to support anybody. As you can see, when I was on the Council of Aging, I got an award for the Citizen of the Year Award for all that I do and help the seniors. I mean, I care about the elderly, I care about people. And some of the rude comments that were made were out of line. People know me. A lot of people in town understand who I am. Sometimes they don't agree with me, and that's fine. That's the way life is. You're not gonna make everybody happy every day of the week. It's just not gonna happen. But I'll do anything I can. First, they gotta get ahold of the director, and then if the director doesn't perform whatever they need, then they can go to a board member and tell them about it, and then the board member can go to the whole board and bring it up and have a discussion on the issue and find a remedy. Some people don't like the remedy, some people do. You know, you can only do what you can do. And that's my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for volunteering to be on the board, replying for it. What do you see as the priorities of the Auburn Housing Authority Board?
The people, the handicap, the, all the residents, the seniors, the people that have mental illness. And, I mean, it's all about the people. That's what it is with me. And if we don't agree with the board, you can't always vote the way certain people want you to or think you are. That's, that's not right. Everybody has their own right, whether you agree or disagree. And that's my, and the veterans are a big thing, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Semper Fi, and thank you for your service. I don't have any further questions.
Wayne, you, I probably already know what the questions are, but in fantasy, I'm gonna ask anyways. If appointed, would you be a candidate for the five-year seat?
Absolutely.
Second, how would you personally be available as a board member to the residents of the community that the Housing Authority oversees?
Yeah, please.
How would you personally be available as a board member for the residents, for the community that you oversee?
Oh, I always will, and I always have, and I will continue doing my best for people, because that's what I believe in. I believe in people.
Hey, Wayne, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I just have two questions. What ideas would you propose to improve housing conditions?
I think, the way housing conditions are going right now, we have a lot of new improvements between sidewalks, roofs, brand-new stoves, new vents. I mean, it's, it's a day-to-day, month-to-month project. And you're not always gonna make somebody happy, but you're gonna make a lot of people happy, and you gotta work on the ones that are having the problems. But taking out on board members and getting, and making one quit is not the right way to do it. And I just say, as far as that goes, I think the management and the office are doing a good job with getting things done. Everything can be done better. That's why we have a board. We need to work together to make things better. You can always make things better. That's my opinion.
Thank you. And my final question is, if you are not selected for the housing board, would you be interested in filling any other open board positions?
Truthfully, I can't really answer that right now.
Fair enough. Thank you so much. Do we need to have them step out to discuss? Okay. So I'm gonna open up for the board for comments and discussion before I entertain-
Thank you, Wayne.
Oh, thank you, Wayne. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Look at this, I had all this stuff.
So before I entertain a motion, I'm gonna open up to the boards to discuss. Does anybody have any comments or discussions?
I do have one comment. I've, I've heard multiple times now that, since the election, more and more people are getting involved, coming to the meetings, and it appears there's a negative connotation associated with that, and I'm just, I'm flummoxed by it. I think more people that are involved, transparency and confidence in the good work that the board does and that the director and her staff do is vital to the authority being run the way that it should be, and for people to feel safe, and that know that they have clean, safe apartments. So I'm, I'm kind of discouraged by constantly hearing that, you know, that's a negative when it's not.
I just wanted a general comment that, in the amount of time we've had vacancies on the board, this is the first time we've had six applicants, and to say that it's a distinguished group of people and a difficult group to select somebody from, from my perspective, is under, an understatement. So I do wanna thank you all for doing and coming and listening to us and answering our questions, and whoever's successful, I know the Housing Authority will be stronger because of it.
Sure. So I have a request to confirm that the housing board meets at the second Tuesday at ten a.m. Second Thursday. Thank you, sorry about that. The second Thursday at ten a.m. The first.
First Thursday.
Yes.
The first Thursday at ten a.m. No worries. Would all of the applicants be able to make that meeting time? Okay. It sounds like the answer to that is yes. If there are any more comments or discussions, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
First, I just wanna thank all of the candidates, and I know that the chair asked you if you were interested in, in being part of other boards. There's lots of boards and committees that need highly qualified members who are interested in serving the community. So I hope that you will consider those if you're not chosen for Housing Authority. Or if you are chosen and you have extra time, you can always serve on more than one board. Based on the, the questions and the backgrounds, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Stephen Consilio to the vacant position.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this will be a roll-call vote. I will start with? Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Mark Benall.
Is there a second?
Am I allowed to, to make a motion?
I would second.
This chair.
Okay. Yes, you can make a nomination.
Can I nominate James Hargrove? Can I say why?
No, I just need to know if there is a second for Mr. Hargrove.
I second that.
Okay. So?
I'll make a motion to close nominations, not hearing anymore.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we have three nominations, Mr. Benall, Mr. Consilio, and Mr. Hargrove. Do we have a motion for one in particular?
Well, I, I think we're supposed to now vote between those three candidates and roll-call and who we choose.
Okay. So we will start with the Board of Selectmen.
Stephen Consilio.
Stephen Consilio.
Stephen Consilio.
I am for Steve as well. Okay? Who are you voting for?
Oh, James Hargrove.
Okay?
Roberta Briggs, James Hargrove.
Okay?
Steve Consilio?
Okay, so?
Madam Chair, I will change my vote, seeing as there is a plurality for Mr. Consilio. I would change it to-
Okay. So by my count, it is six for Mr. Consilio and three for Mr. Hargrove. It is just a majority vote, so congratulations, Mr. Consilio. Absolutely. I think the housing board just needs to close your meeting.
The motion?
Motion to adjourn for the, for the Housing Authority.
I make the motion to adjourn? No, don't.
We usually do our closing a little bit different. Your name and then whether you close, you vote to close.
Wendy Steinhuber makes the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, then you second it. You say your name. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We normally do it by, because we were questioned by somebody in East Cupcase someplace, we have to close our meetings by saying?
Aye.
I, Roberta Briggs, vote to close.
I, Rose Turner, vote to close.
I, Sharon Catina, vote to close.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great.
May I just make a motion that we have a five-minute recess so the-
Absolutely.
-members can depart at their leisure and-
Very much.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair is a yes. Thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with the select board meeting. We don't have any public hearings or presentations or any communication, so we're gonna move along to the select board general items. There is a request for a one-day beer and wine license for Redemption Rock at Patrick Volkswagen. Is there? Oh, great. Yeah, or you can just come up to the seat if that's easier as well. Hi. Can you say your name?
Yeah, my name is Dan Carlson. I'm one of the owners of Redemption Rock Brewing.
Great. And can you just tell us a little bit what about, what the liquor license, the one-day liquor license is for?
Yes, so we've been invited to the Patrick Volkswagen grand opening on July twentieth from five-thirty to eight-thirty p.m. So they're throwing a grand opening party with food trucks, and they've invited us to come serve beer to guests that are over twenty-one. So we'll go there, we will bring the beer ourselves, we have our own setup in which we'll sell either cans or pints off of our local draft system. We'll have two people on staff, both of which are tip-certified, so we'll be able to monitor consumption, check for IDs, things like that. We'll be operating our own cash bar. We'll be bringing all the alcohol ourselves and bringing it back with us as well.
Great. Do any board members have questions? Certainly. Go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
Can you just explain how you're going to keep under twenty-one's out of these areas and not serve?
Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be checking everyone's IDs when they come up for beer, and then our staff is also trying to make sure that nobody is, to identify warning signs of when people might be trying to hand off, either they've purchased somebody else, you know. If someone wants to purchase more than one beer at once, we would ask for multiple IDs if it looks like they're buying it for somebody else. If somebody comes up multiple times in a short window of time, we monitor that as well. And then we also be working with, of course, the event staff for Patrick Volkswagen as well, to make sure that we're on the same page and looking out for the same kind of warning signs.
So is this area clearly demarked, and you're only going to let people in who are twenty-one?
Not for the entire area, I believe. I know we are in this, we are in one specific area, we're in what's kind of the, the service tunnel. I'm not sure if the event's planning on making that particular space twenty-one-plus or not, but in any case, we'll be monitoring the crowd ourselves along with their, with their guests. Yeah.
How will you be verifying the IDs?
Oh, so we're, we're trained on that, so things like checking for expiration dates, signs that it's authentic, you know, the holograms and stuff like that, understanding the weight and thickness of things like that.
Thank you.
Do other board members have questions? Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the license applicable, subject to, I should know it by heart, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it, fit to comply with any and all conditions shall validate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. The chair is a yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a drain layers license for in the show-in contracting. Is that right? Is this a new license, or is this a?
Madam Chair, it's my, it is my understanding this is a new license and not a renewal. I think it's the board's policy that the applicant be present for the issuance of a new license and not a renewal. That being said, I would suggest to the board that they hold this item over till their next meeting, and we'll ask the applicant to appear before the board when the board is considering approval of the license.
Okay. Does anybody have any concerns with that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair is a yes. All right, there are proclamations and recognitions, there are none, and we do have a gift acceptance from Gibbs Realtying for a hundred and fifty dollars for the Auburn- from Gibbs Realty in for $150 for the Auburn Farmers Market and Farmers and Cultural Market.
Motion approved with gratitude.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is a yes.
Chair, is it appropriate to make a motion to take 7B out of order?
Sure. Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? The Chair is a yes as well. So we were going, let's move to the request for ARPA funds.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to call Joanna Paquin up, our DPW director, who can share a description of what it is we are seeking. There is a CMR PC program that will allow us to do inventory of our sidewalks and rate them like we do our roadway systems, and I think Joanna could share some of the details of that. Additionally, as part of one of my goals that's on the, that I was going to suggest to the board tonight is for a sidewalk and pedestrian safety program and how we're going to fund that and a long-term vision, short-term goals, funding mechanisms. I think this would dovetail very nicely with this ARPA request if the board wants to keep that in mind as it considers whether to approve it or not. With that, Joanna, if you can just share with the board some of the elements of that program?
So as part of the discussion on sidewalks and accessibility, Adam Menard, the town planner, and I have discussed what we can do as a long-term plan for the sidewalks. We get requests from residents on a regular basis for, you know, sections of sidewalk to be added, to be redone, more so added. We have a plan for reconstruction of sidewalks during, when we do our regular roadway reconstruction projects, but there really hasn't been a formal, long-term, holistic, overall, town-wide plan for filling in those gaps where we don't have, you know, where sidewalk ends and then it doesn't continue for another thousand feet like on Brimmar Ave. So this would be a plan from, done by CMR PC, and they would do an overall survey of the town, look at the priorities, priority areas, and provide a plan for us to follow, including cost analysis and feasibility. So at this time, we're looking for $20,000, which would include the plan as well as the survey. We have had a survey done, I believe in 2018. This would be an updated survey with additional information and as well as more, a better idea of what the current status and the current condition of the sidewalks are.
Do any board members have questions?
I just have a couple. In terms of what they're collecting on the sidewalks and the ramps, under condition, I assume they're collecting the slopes and.
So they would be, one of our, one of our issues is that, you know, a lot of our ramps are bituminous concrete. So that's, it's difficult as, you know, to control the slope. So over the past, probably about five years, we've incorporated cement concrete ramps so that we, so that those are compliant, they don't move. You know, asphalt usually, you know, tends to shift a little bit and puts us in noncompliance, so that would be part of that.
So they'll be collecting, okay, so what method of collection are they using? Are they going out in the field in person for every location? Are they using an AI technology? What type of system are they using?
So it's more of a visual, you know, in person in the field, but not, not a topographical survey, not to that detail.
Yes, I do. Did you say the cost was 15,000 or 20,000?
So the, the plan itself is 15,000 and then an additional cost of five for, for the updated survey. So we would like to have an updated survey so that we have a better idea of what the conditions are and along with some of the other items that have not been looked at in 2018.
Thank you.
So the ongoing maintenance of the plan, is it really ongoing or it's just to get the 2018 plan valid?
So the 2018 plan was more of a prioritization plan, and it wasn't really focused as much on just sidewalks. This is a broad, overall, town-wide plan looking at the priorities, focusing on the parks, the schools, senior center, as well as gaps within the town. So it would be more of a complete plan and a, a plan to move forward, a prioritization plan to move forward.
Since 2018, has the plan that they completed been kept up to date as progress has been made?
We have, we have completed or are in, some of the projects are in progress. Some of, there are some portions of the plan we haven't found funding for, so that's, that's also part of that study to, to help us find funding for some of these projects. I think we've had that discussion on, in several meetings where sidewalks, you know, to build a sidewalks or reconstruct a sidewalk, it's, it's not as, it's not as costly as a road, but when you take into account the other mitigation, the, you know, the cutting slope going into private property, that type of thing, it can get costly as well as looking at the right-of-way and the limitations that, that causes.
I'm not saying I'm against this, but if we had a plan in 2018 to prioritize, isn't, aren't those at the top of the list and shouldn't we already know that and be working towards?
I think that there were, there's, like I said, there's several items that have been addressed, and then there's several items that, that may not be as feasible, just based on the slope and the topography of those areas. So, and the, that plan was more looking at what the financial, you know, what we could possibly, you know, do or we could get funding for, but this would be more so looking at what the town is looking for, for priorities, not just. There was, there was one section of town on Upland Street where there's, there's a gap in a sidewalk. Unfortunately, that area is very difficult to, to build in, so I'm not sure how feasible that would be, but that would be a major capital improvements project that, that we haven't been able to, to address. So we're, we're looking at more of the, more of the priorities that, that we could, that would be more feasible.
So this, we'll address that or they'll tell you each process and those ones that are too difficult or too costly? Well, know about, but a cost associated with it or?
Yes, so that, it, it looks at the costs and the funding sources, and it would evaluate the entire process as a whole.
And then when you say funding sources, so like if it's tied into another project, there may be funding, but there isn't one grant for sidewalks that we're aware of?
There, there are, and we've, we've applied to, to grants, for grants for sidewalks. We haven't been successful in the past, but we'll continue to, to apply for those grants. But as, you know, as a regional, regional committee, they might be more aware of other funding opportunities that, that we don't know about.
And looking at going forward and proposing budgets and such, I know with, like, complete streets, we're supposed to be adding sidewalks in many locations. Is the goal to do that still or is the goal to, to the roadway repairs and sidewalks separately or?
So I think this survey would be very helpful in us for applying for external funds, whether it be federal or state, beyond Chapter 90 and beyond the local contribution that we are going to suggest in order to tackle some of the issues that we're facing on a day-to-day basis. We've talked about this, we've been talking about this for a while. We wanted to initiate our own local program, but certainly I think this positions us well to apply for external funds. I, I, this is analogous to our five-year capital improvement plan. Things are changing all the time. Costs are changing, priorities are changing. Certain things are getting done under federal and state grant projects. And so things are moving all the time. So we need to stay on top of the list as things are getting accomplished and reprioritize and do a reassessment of our needs, almost like our five-year CIP.
So then internally, will we be maintaining that as projects come up or are we going to be looking for $5,000 every year to maintain?
I'm, I'm looking at this as a CIP, you know, like, like the town manager had said, a five-year CIP plan. So I, I don't really see, just like with our roadway inventory, we look at, you know, we look at our roadways every year and we would continue to look at that, the condition of the sidewalks as well, as well as the roadways. But I, I don't know if, if we have a five-year CIP plan and we have those sidewalks that, that, you know, that we know that need to get done and those gaps that we need to get done, I don't know if we really need to have a yearly update because at some point you need to get those projects done, not just keep on getting that, the data.
Also, Mr. Chambers, based on, you know, what's in here and my familiarity with the, with the program, when you talk about updating it annually, I don't think you mean going and doing census every year. I think you mean capturing what DPW has done, going into the database and updating that, that is included in here. So that as the DPW takes this five-year plan, and I will say that typically every five years, these types of surveys are done, both for roadways as well as sidewalks, so that you can update the conditions because especially in a community that uses asphalt berm and asphalt sidewalks, typically what will happen is tree roots grow more so than concrete wood, they buckle, they, you know, you, you start to lose, you start to see more issues with ADA access, you know, in terms of the sloping condition of them. So five years is the normal time for, to update this, and if the last one was in 2018, we are due because conditions do change. But what this does include, I think, is what you're talking about, is that each year as DPW makes the changes on the sidewalks, they will update that database so that they know that this is now built, it's now ADA compliant, it meets our complete streets goals, and it will track it on annual basis, something that I don't know if it's been happening to your point, the 2018 plan, I don't know if it's been updated as changes are made or as the new sidewalk in Brimmar gets built, if that's been updated in the database. CMR PC has a database that they maintain, and according to this, they're going to be working with DPW each year to update it. So we now have a running list of everything that's accomplished so that, God forbid, we ever get called on our federal ADA compliance, we now have the data to back up that we are meeting the goals of our transition plan.
Madam Chair, that's a great point, Todd. What I, what I do want to say is from year to year, we don't know what roadways we're going to pave, and we're trying to take advantage of doing the sidewalks as we're reconstructing or repaving our roads. That will result in savings by combining those two together, so that's why this is constantly changing. We need to update it on an annual basis.
Very complete scope of services, so. I don't want to have to review it. But my question is, how is this work going to be done? Is this going to be done by contractors? Are we anticipating some assistance from some contractors, some sewer, not sewer, highway department help depending on the size of the project, the scope of the project? Do we have the type of equipment to rebuild these roads in-house?
So if it's a small project, the highway department can, can tackle it. We've done resurfacing of sidewalks in the past. When it comes to construction, constructing sidewalks, I'd be hesitant to put that on the highway department just because they have other priorities as well, and we do have limited resources. So we, like I said, we, as part of the roadway reconstruction project, we have an opportunity to reconstruct the sidewalks. If there are gaps, we can include that in the contract. So I think it'd be a mixture of, of both.
So we have a well-defined street program. How does this, and we know that the money is not sufficient to keep pace with what we need done, how is adding this piece to it making that better or worse, shall we say?
So adding this piece will, will give us an idea of how much we need to invest in our, in our sidewalks. If we're looking at, at building these sidewalks and looking at the priorities and looking at that, those gaps, you know, it gives us a better idea of what the funding, you know, what we're looking for funding on, you know, above and beyond just reconstructing of existing sidewalks.
There are grants for these type of things to marry with the existing program? Did I hear that correct, Mr. Casanova?
As I've been told, yes. We have to be aggressive and pursue any funding outside of local contribution. We can do it under Chapter 90 if we wanted to, but Chapter 90 has been a fixed amount. We still try to advocate for more money for Chapter 90. I don't know what the, the position of the new administration is. I know if they can, they will, but there are the priorities that they, they need to address. So we're hoping we may get a bump in Chapter 90. We did get a bump in a supplemental to Chapter 90 this year of 300,000, I believe. It doesn't go a long way, but it helps, and that's why we want to come up with a funding plan that addresses this on an annual basis, just like we did with our financial policy for the CIP, where we now permanently baked in about 1.6 million. If we can do the same for the sidewalk and pedestrian safety program, we have to look at the long term, we're not going to do it overnight, but we have a few ideas that we want to focus on in consultation with Dory and Joanna to bring back a plan, and let's start addressing these issues.
No, it's. I only had one, so. And then we do get complaints about sidewalk parking, and we're talking about improving the sidewalks. What kind of strategies exist to, I'll say, to be charitable, inhibit cars from being able to do this? I mean, I hate Cape Cod berm. I think that's the worst thing in the world, especially if you've got plows, it's going to take it out. You get it for one year and it's gone. You're constantly just patching it. So to me, you know, I know granite is expensive, so don't call me, but it's a much better product and it stands up a lot better than the Cape Cod berms. But is there any strategies to inhibit people from parking?
So, I mean, we, we have used, so if you looked at the, if you go down Brimmar Ave, we, we used bituminous berm, but we used a more vertical curb so to discourage people from, you know, to have that separation between pedestrian and vehicle traffic. So that's, that's one thing. I can tell you that if we, if we used granite curving, we, we wouldn't be able to get many, many roads done each year. I love granite curving, I just, I, I.
I know, I know it's expensive, but it, it lasts.
It does.
It's virtually maintenance-free, and it honestly, I mean, from an aesthetic view, it's the best thing that you can have. But I also understand the, as someone who complains about the taxes, I understand that we can't have everything we want, but thank you for that.
I don't have any questions either, but I do believe there is a question in the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe.
I believe we should have a surplus of granite curbing over at the DPW that was stacked and piled from years past. I don't know if that's still there. My other question or comment is, I, I believe that the, the money could be used for building the curbs instead of doing a survey. I, I mean, I believe Mr. Fairbanks is more than qualified to go around and, and check these things out. I mean, $20,000 is a lot of money to just have somebody who probably doesn't even know the town of Auburn drive around and go, oh, yeah, that curb he's been on, oh, yeah, that curb. Mr. Mr. Fairbanks is, he knows the town. He's very knowledgeable. And the $20,000 could go right towards the curbs instead of hiring, you know, what's, what's the percentage of, of the list that was done in 2018? 2018, here we are in 2023. If we haven't gotten to those by now, we got, we got a major problem.
Thank you for your comments. It's certainly something we can look into.
Thank you.
So we would need a motion to move this forward for the request for ARPA funds?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the scope of work as presented by the town administration.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you. And we're going back to 7A, the town manager goals. Going to turn it over to the.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I know you and I had a discussion prior to my vacation. At, at the time, I think we were waiting for some suggestions by the board to come into the chair relative to the BOS goals that would help me facilitate a recommendation of my goals. My concern is right now, we're approaching middle of July. I'm about, almost six months into my contract. My contract does require that the board approve my goals. I'm a little concerned about the clock at this point in time. I do have two things in mind and I, and I indicated to the board that one of them was a, in, I don't know if I provided it to you, but I will verbally. Two things. I think it's important that we update our salary compensation plan. There hasn't been done since 2019. We are, and I, I know the board is aware of this, we are having trouble recruiting personnel for vacancies that exist because our wages are not competitive with surrounding communities. This is an analysis that we need to constantly update, almost just like the sidewalk plan in the CIP. Things are changing day-to-day. And that requires a, a lot of work to compile and more so to do the analysis of our existing employees. We know we have to make some adjustments at the fall town meeting. I indicated that to the, to the board. So this would be very helpful to us in, in, in making some recommendations. Also, I want to develop a financial plan that would provide an annual appropriation to address not only our sidewalks, crosswashes and signalization, but pedestrian safety as a whole. I think that has been, come to the forefront of, of many discussions. I think that needs to be addressed as it relates to our, our roadway program. Because quite honestly, they go, they go hand in hand together. So I think some opportunities may provide us to bring to you a comprehensive plan that would allow us to begin to address those needs. So I'm proposing those two. I don't know if the board would like to wait until its next meeting or at least allow us to begin on, on these two goals.
I just want to comment that I did receive goals from some members and I plan to put them on the next meeting.
I did just have a comment. I certainly don't object to the two, two goals. But I, I know that one of my goals has been, and I worked on it with Select and Liberty, and, and then I reviewed Mr. Karain's excellent scope of work here as well. And it seemed like a start to what I and Mr. Liberty talked about, probably not in this detail. So I'm certainly not going to claim any credit for what Mr. Karain did because I don't think I'm capable of it. But that is a goal. I think we really do need to look at our communication strategy. We need to look at a multi-generational strategy. We put everything out on the web, in social media. People in the electronic signs, I'm very grateful that we have them, but there's so much traffic on those sides. At the speed that you're going, you can't read them. So you're not getting, so the person who isn't someone who lives on their computer or even turns it on once a day, you know, I would like to see the Auburn account go back out into the business community. I would, and I know the Flagtown Flyer is, you know, the FASC group, but I'd like the town to at least have some conversation with them. They used to have that out in the community. And that's a great thing for new people wanting to know what's going on at the senior center. They, again, they may not be on the computer. They may not think or, and frankly, our website is not easy to find information on and it is not easily navigatable. So that is, you know, something that I think we really need to address. And, and the other part, which I know Mr. Rass worked with the chamber to get the Auburn guide as our URL. But we have not had that and they have not produced anything in partnership with that. I think we should really start looking at changing that URL to a gov. Because I do think that it is, I've just done general searches. And again, I'm not, you know, I'm certainly not Einstein. I'm not saying that. But there are many Auburns and most people are looking for a .gov because that is what it is. So, you know, I think we really do need to start looking at even the address so that people can find us easily. And it, and it does seem like that partnership. I know they used to produce a small residence telephone book. So that was when we were just getting started, as Mr. Kazanov will remember from his time with Mr. Rass. But that is long since that partnership, that part of it anyways, seems to have abated. And I think it would be much easier for people to find us if we had a standard address and look at navigation, look at updating it. But I'm dominating the conversation, so I apologize.
I'm going to go back to trying to keep taxes neutral for people. And I know there's a lot of money that could be spent. I don't know if there's any savings to be had. But I, I definitely know we talk about all these things and they all come at a cost. So I'm not saying that I expect it to be neutral. But we, we got to look at some cost savings. And a salary compensation plan is not going to be cost-neutral. So just thinking of those things, I, I mean, I, I don't want to be too ambitious where we're putting out too much money in each year. But a long-term strategy about how to fix that would probably be, go a long way for, you know, a cost-neutral tax or a minimal tax increase, which the town's been doing so well for so many years.
Madam Chair, I'm not opposed to looking at communications or social media aspect. But to Steve's point, I, any changes that are recommendations that may be made may come at a cost to the town. And I don't know what that cost is. And certainly, my hands are tied if it does require some upgrades, some costs that I don't have access to. So we could, we could look at that. We could, we could provide a report as, as part of a goal. But certainly, that would be contingent upon potentially a town meeting vote that will allow us to, to, to go that route.
And just to be clear, I view it as a multi-year goal versus a single year. I think what Mr. Karain has outlined here will go a long way. Just the agenda process is, is cumbersome. But I do look at it as that is our front door. How many people walk in the front door these days? Not many. So we need to make sure that we're giving the residents the information they need, the businesses the information they need so that they can make, I mean, we do a lot of good work up here. Let's, let's promote the hell out of it so that when people are looking to cite their businesses or come to town. It's not just the education system that brings people to Auburn. We have wonderful athletic programs. We have a wonderful direct program that seems to grow. And, you know, I think we do a lot of things that if people look around, we do it very well. And the big thing that, for me, also is our library. We have the best hours in the area, all the way to Mr. Kazanov's hometown currently. We have the best hours and that's something that we should be selling to people. When we were out holding signs or trying to get signatures, it was amazing how many people not from town come to Auburn to use our services. So we want to promote that. We want to, you know, it, it's not all storm and drang and all bad stuff. I mean, we get it right more than we get it wrong. And I think you hear a lot of noise out in the larger world that government is bad and everybody who works there is, you know, thinking of dark plots to take something from you. But I have not found that in the 27 years that I've been a volunteer in the town of Auburn. So do we have issues? Absolutely. But we also have great people and we need to promote them and we need to promote the good things that we do. So the people feel good when you send them that tax bill. They probably won't feel that good when they open it, but they'll feel good when they see the value for the services that you do provide. So I'll put my soapbox away.
Are there any other comments on them?
I'm sorry, I have one question. In item number five, it, you, it says ensure best practices by going out to RFQ for outside.
Yeah, that, that's my list. That's not, that's not.
Okay.
My suggestions.
All right. So, okay, where, so Mr. Kazanov, are you giving us a list of your goals? You mentioned two of them, but are you giving a list of them to us?
So I'm proposing those two. Certainly, I think the time that I have left for year one is, is, is going to.
Okay, I understand, yeah.
I think you want to challenge. Let's load this up.
I think this is doable because you're not going to be doing it alone.
So do we need to put goals associated with these? Or you're going to propose, so you mentioned the two plans. What do you need from us tonight? You said you wanted to get this in front of us.
So I don't know what the board's wish is. I know we had a, a general conversation about this at the last meeting. I think there was going to be a collection of ideas. I had a discussion with Sarah earlier, late last week. And I think the board at that time, I think Mr. Carpenter's was received, but I don't. So based upon a discussion I had with the chair, there was, it was her thinking that, you know, the board's goals would be suitable for the August meeting. But I need to get started on, on, on my end. If I wait till August now, I have basically September, October, November, December to accomplish that.
Madam Chair, if I can just, so I did provide these. I don't look at this as something you have to get done in year one or, you know, this is a multi-year approach. I will say, you know, to Mr. Chambers' concerns about cost, a lot of this stuff can be done without adding cost within the current, you know, systems the town already has access to. It's just learning how to better use those systems. And, and, you know, the agendas, like those types of things. So I think some of this is doable. You know, in terms of the, what you mentioned, the salary plan, as somebody who has gone through hiring and staffing up a brand-new municipal department right next door, I can tell you that salary is not the main thing people are looking at right now. They're looking at benefits packages. They, it's, it's about quality of life. How much time off are they getting? Not necessarily, you know, how much is their paycheck? You know, whether you, the town, and I don't know if the town does this, whether you participate in the, you know, the Family Leave Act, you know, whether the town participates in that or not, the Optional Family Leave Act, you know, the, the vacation time, the personal time, the sick time. They're looking at those types of things just as much as they're looking at salary. So when you do the salary analysis, I would ask that you also do a benefits analysis and compare benefit packages as well and, and see whether that is competitive as well. And, and I would say that the more people are shifting towards the central mass and towards the western part of the state and with telecommuting for jobs, even jobs you previously couldn't telecommute for, you're not just competing with Holden or Shrewsbury. You know, you're, you're now competing with Framingham's, Natick's, Hawken Town. So I would say take a broader look at the talent pool you're trying to recruit for those positions and what you're competing against is not just the four communities around you right anymore.
So, Mr. Karain, just to let you know through the chair, that's something we look at every year. And to a certain extent, I hands it to you because these are, in most cases, these have to be bargained with the, with the unions. So we're locked in for a three-year period. And so any change in health insurance, whether it be in premium or whether it be in, in benefits, it has to go before the Insurance Advisory Committee and there's a whole process there. I think what's becoming difficult for us to attract help today is the, the new options in COVID. A lot of people are allowed to work remotely and that's something we cannot do in municipal government. So without impacting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say that most municipalities are now allowing, certainly not 100% remote, not four out of five days like the state is doing in some cases, but certainly one or two days. You know, people are, if they have access for remote access, that has become since COVID typical, even for municipal, for office staff, for, you know, certainly not for your DPW laborers, even your DPW management, but certainly for your planning, you know, your planning staff, those types of positions.
Right, but please understand that creates a lot of complexities when unions are comparing what they do versus what others do, what options there.
But it is being done and that's what you are competing against. So you have to take that into account. I would just ask you that if, if we, if we want to attract the best talent pool, we have to consider everything we're competing against and make sure we're competitive across the board.
All right, so what actual goals are we looking at? What Todd has put together?
No, he's looking at a salary compensation plan and then a financial plan to address public pedestrian safety.
I'd like to add the communication strategy as a goal. And again, as Mr. Karain said, there are things we can do without blowing a budget. But at least prioritize and see what we can accomplish within the next six months and work towards, and again, we haven't fully vetted this, but work towards ease of access and use. And we can talk more about those actual individual goals, but I know you wanted to get started on working.
That would be fine as long as there's an understanding that's a, that's a long-term goal and not in a fixed set of time.
And what I would hope is that from this meeting to the next meeting, you can look at what you think could be achievable towards that and then get a setup and then, you know, hey, here, three months, six months, a year, something like that. And we could vote on the goals there and timelines that are reasonable.
And keep in mind, the review does not grade you on goals anymore. We changed that prior to Julie leaving because that was always a difficult thing and it always seemed to ding her scores. So, and in fairness, most of the goals that we adopted for Julie were multi-year goals. And we also know that the manager isn't doing this in isolation. So thank God for that. But if that's in the form of a motion, Mr. Chambers, I would second.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
All of them in favor? I just want to be clear what the motion is that we're.
The motion is for the town manager to continue to develop a salary compensation plan, the pedestrian safety plan and financial analysis around that and a communication strategy that can be achieved in the next three, six, one-year term. And then he would develop that. And then he would develop that presented at, we believe, the August meeting, and vote on the individual goals at that point.
You can say use this as a template.
Okay. Start it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair is a yes as well. We do not have any table items, we do not have any member items, no minutes to review, so we would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.